Good evening. Welcome to the January 31st, 2022 special meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order. I'll just let you all know that Councilor Zenati is on her way, stuck in traffic. There's evidently a fire or something around somewhere, so we'll see her in just a second. But at this point, I would ask you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up on the agenda tonight is the swearing in of Seat 3 appointee Kevin Clark to the Stillwater City Council by Municipal Judge Tanya Ron.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and I will not knowingly receive
I will not knowingly receive
directly or indirectly
directly or indirectly
any money or other valuable thing
any money or any valuable thing
for the performance or non-performance
for the performance or non-performance
of any act or duty pertaining to my office
of any act or duty pertaining to my office
other than the compensation allowed by law
other than the compensation allowed by law
and I further swear
and I further swear
that I will faithfully discharge
that I will faithfully discharge
my duties of the office
my duties of the office
of City of Stillwater, Councilor Office Number Three.
of the City of Stillwater, Office Counselor Three.
to the best of my abilities.
to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Counselor. All right.
Thank you, Judge. We appreciate your help with the swearing in. Good to see you. And welcome to the City Councilor, Counselor Clark.
Thank you.
You get to jump right in. You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Item four is public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for that item tonight, so we will jump right down to item five, which is general orders. Five A is receive a second quarter financial report and approve budget amendments that we will have described to us by Kristy Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I am here this evening to provide an overview of our second quarter financial report for fiscal year '22. And I just want to assure you from the start that there are no budgetary concerns. I'll start with an overview of our revenues. And organization-wide, we're doing very well and are on track to meet or exceed our original budget projections. We are currently 50% of the way through the year. And when we look at our sales and use tax combined, we're at 59.3% of budget. Our police department fines are at 79.8% of budget. However, I will point out that this has not returned to our pre-pandemic level. Our utility sales in the SUA are at 56.5% of budget. Our lodging tax is at 90.3% of budget, and this has returned to our pre-pandemic levels. Our airport fees and rentals are at 63.5% of budget. And then finally, the city has received the first half of its American Rescue Plan Act allocation, otherwise known as ARPA funds. So this was received in the second quarter and totaled $4.4 million. We do anticipate receiving the last half of that, or another $4.4 million during this last half of the fiscal year. Those funds are currently reserved in the city's grant fund, and the city manager does anticipate bringing a report to council in the coming weeks to discuss some options on use of those funds. On the expenditure side, there really is nothing of significance to report. Across the organization, our expenditures are under budget. So if we look specifically at payroll, it's at 46% of budget. Our materials and supplies are at 45%, and then our services are at 38%. We do have some action items on the agenda this evening. Our sales and use tax is projected to exceed the original budget projection by about 15%. And staff does feel that that is a realistic yet conservative estimate. And so for that reason, a budget amendment is proposed to increase sales tax from $28 million to $32 million and increase use tax from $2.8 million to $3.3 million. Additional budget amendments are proposed to transfer the dedicated portion of the sales tax increase to the SUA and the Transportation Sales Tax Fund. And as a reminder, those dedicated portions are one penny to SUA and half penny to transportation. So this BA, or this budget amendment, sorry, would be a transfer of $1.1 million to the SUA and then $550,000 to the Transportation Sales Tax Fund. The remaining increased sales and use tax is being proposed to be transferred to the city's capital fund. And really thus far, the city has had its best sales and use tax year in our history. And I think we would all like to think that this is the new norm and is here to stay, but staff remains cautiously optimistic. And for that, you know, because we don't know the longevity of this trend in increased collections, we just feel that it's prudent action at this time to use that non-dedicated revenue to invest in our community's capital needs. And so for that reason, a budget amendment is proposed to transfer $2,850,000 to the city's capital fund. And so I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Kristy. Counselors, questions?
Good problem to have, right?
I wouldn't even describe it as a problem. I think it's, yeah, it's great to see that that sales tax collections are doing so well and so strongly, and also, I think, wise to keep that money in reserve, at least for So really, all these budget amendments are doing is just allowing our budget to show additional revenue. We don't have any budget amendments that would be used to spend any of this revenue right now.
That is correct. And the transfers that are being proposed would not occur until we actually received in those additional revenues.
Sure. Yeah, we're just changing the budget to show that that's what we expect to get over the course of the fiscal year.
That is correct.
One question on expenditures. You mentioned that, I think you said personnel costs, no, services expenses, we're only at 38%. Is there a reason we're not closer to spending half of the budget on those?
I don't know that I have a great answer for that. I know we have some large dollar items in our services accounts. That's where our purchase power is housed, and we have some contingency funds that reside in our services accounts, which much of those remain untapped. And so that would be my guess as to why that is much lower.
We just haven't had a rainy day yet that we needed to spend some of that money on?
Well, we still have a designated contingency that would have to receive council's approval before it was spent.
Counselors, further questions? So tell us your recommendations, Kristy.
Yes, and bear with me because it's kind of long. So there's a motion to approve the attached budget amendments, increasing sales tax revenue by $4 million and use tax revenue by $500,000, and transferring $1,100,000 from the general fund to the SUA for the dedicated one cent sales tax, $550,000 from the general fund to the transportation sales tax for the dedicated half cent sales tax, and $2,850,000 from the general fund to the capital fund.
Thank you, Kristy. Counselors, action on the recommendations?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation and to approve the attached budget amendments. Please vote. If they go to five to zero, those budget amendments are approved. Thank you, Kristy. Thank you for the hard work of you and your team. Item 5B, 2021 Public Safety Highlights from Dawn Jones.
Hold it down just a little bit. Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. We want to share with you and our community some highlights from 2021 of the phenomenal service our public safety professionals provide our patrons. Please know this information doesn't include the many above and beyond efforts such as our community service efforts, Shop with a Cop, Cops and Bobbers, and other events. This information also doesn't share the planning and protection with events such as Holiday Parade, Oklahoma State University Homecoming Parade and Walk Around, Martin Luther King Jr. March, and the list goes on and on. Additionally, the devout partnership and dedication to help multiple organizations throughout our great city, such as OSU, Stillwater Public Schools, Stillwater Medical Center, Pan County Health Department, Visit Stillwater, Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, and so many more, our public safety entities go above and beyond to help in any way they can with the COVID-19 health crisis, severe weather crisis, emergency preparedness, and more. This is just a glimpse into the response calls and call-outs of our public safety entities. So let's look at some of those numbers. Stillwater Police Department, just in 2021, responded to more than 30,000 calls. That breakdown is 911 calls, not including medical assistant transfers, those that go to Life Net and other areas. 3,515 received, calls received on police department line, not 911, that they responded to, 16,392. Officer-initiated, that's traffic stops, field interviews, et cetera, 9,753. Monitored alarm systems, 392, and then administrator call line, three of those. Again, I want to emphasize that all of the numbers that we're sharing with you, these are not the numbers that reflect the calls, the total number of calls that they receive. These are response calls and call-outs. So for 2021, Chief Jeff Watts, Assistant Chief Shannon Jordan led their team. Total employees, 129. Sworn officers, 81. Civilian employees, 48. Weeks of training is really what, one of the many things that sets our police department apart from so many other police departments throughout Oklahoma and the nation, in my opinion. Uncertified officers experienced 49 weeks of training, then certified officers 32 weeks of training, and that's before they're ever alone serving the public. Stillwater Fire Department responded to more than 1,000 additional calls in '21 than in 2020. Total responded calls in '21, 3,888. Of those, EMS was 46%, and that's those priority-one life-saving calls. Fire alarms, excuse me, 25%. Grass fires, 6%. Vehicle accidents with injuries, 6%. Structure fires, 2%. And our fire department is led by Chief Terry Essery, Fire Marshal Steve Sylvester. They have a total number of employees, 76. Sworn firefighters, 74. So they only have two civilian employees and five interns. Their training hours were more than 8,300 just in 2021. Stillwater Emergency Management, that is led by Director Rob Hill and Deputy Director Brendan Pope. And I want to clarify that Brendan Pope is new, so for 2021, it was, there was just a total team of three. So now we have four and approximately 18 volunteers. So SEMA proactively plans for all hazards, helps reduce threats, and prepares residents for emergencies. Deployment, just for 2021, deployment in 35 severe weather events. They managed six disasters that were declared presidential disasters that affected Stillwater alone. Some of the many efforts that SEMA stepped in and helped with, they assisted Stillwater Medical Center and Pan County Health Department with community health crisis due to COVID-19, covered large events, example, OSU homecoming, and so many more, provided logistics and support for firefighting, provided technical assistance to SOT and SWAT, and received additional training and provided training to many of our city employees, me included. Stillwater Animal Welfare, they responded to 2,117 total call-outs in 2021. I don't know if everyone understands the great work that this little team does. So some of the call-outs included dropping the shelter animals off or picking them up from the vet, 553, picked up dogs at large within the community, 448, picked up deceased animals, 325, removed stray animals from private property, 154, welfare concern checks, 125, responded to bite complaints, 40, responded to barking complaints, 23. So our animal welfare is under the direction of the Stillwater Police because it is public safety. Our captain that oversees that is Roy Stevens. Our director is new, and she is just doing an amazing job, Rachel Wasserman. They now have a total of five employees and approximate volunteers, 15. In conclusion, we greatly appreciate the continued hard work and dedication from all of our public safety professionals. We are truly safer, and our community is better because of their efforts. We just wanted to share some good news with you guys.
Thank you, Dawn. Counselors, any questions, comments about public safety?
Just one quick question. I was reading, I read an article in The Oklahoman over the weekend, and they were talking about the severe shortage they have had of 911 operators in their police department. And so just if anyone else saw that article, I wondered if we were having those types of issues in Stillwater, or we felt confident the levels of employment for our 911 operators.
Do you want to answer that, or do you want me to, Norma?
I'm happy to either way.
Okay, okay. So actually, benefit here, I am a new member of the Citizen Academy. And so our first night was this past Tuesday, and so we went, and that was the area that we went and met with, and they have a great team. They've just hired a newer individual, and she was learning the ropes and doing very well. And so right now, I think that they're good, but they're always looking to add more.
I'm sure that's a very high-stress position, so I
I can only imagine. You should see the screens they were explaining to us. And if there wouldn't have been a little dot to keep me on the screen, I felt like a cat chasing the little red dot, because that's what I was doing in the 911 area. So, yeah, great group, phenomenal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Appreciate the update, and we appreciate certainly all of the very, very hard work and very needed work that our public safety team here in the city of Stillwater does. Item 5C, a Renewable Energy Task Force presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. Becky Taylor, Chief Civic Innovation Officer. On March 2nd, 2020, the Stillwater City Council adopted Resolution 2020-8, which expressed the city of Stillwater's commitment to clean renewable energy and created the Citizens Advisory Task Force, or the Renewable Energy Task Force, to develop and propose clean energy goals and benchmarks for the city. COVID delayed the start of this task force, but they were able to really start working in December of 2020. And over the course of the last 12 months, the Renewable Energy Task Force has met regularly. They conducted research of other communities, met with community partners throughout Stillwater, toured many of the city facilities, and met with department directors, and ultimately came up with the Energy Action Plan you are reviewing this evening. I want to thank each task force member, and many of them are here today, Mayberry Baldwin, Robin Cornwell, Pat Darlington, Madeline Godard, Deanna Homer, Mike Shanahan, Sharon Shanahan, Alan Tree, Henri Uohara, and Christine Waits for volunteering to serve in this capacity. I also want to thank Lisa Vetter with LM Vetter Consulting for working with the task force throughout this process. And tonight's presentation will be made by two of our task force members, so Pat Darlington and Robin Cornwell.
Pat Darlington, 1806 North husband, Stillwater. It is really nice to be here and to see you from this side of the horseshoe. I know this, you're just hanging on every word. Becky did a nice job of naming the task force members. We do have Robin Cornwell, Madeline, Henri, and Deanna here. I'd like for them to stand up so you can recognize their faces.
Christine.
Oh, Christine, knock in, yep. Besides Lisa Vetter, our consultant, who we would not have gotten to this point without, Becky Taylor, Patty Osmus, and Lauren Smith were a huge help. And the other city staff, the library staff, Emily States and Brenna Gilchrist did a lot of research for us. They're amazing, amazingly able to find all kinds of obscure things. Just to take a little bit of a broader perspective, I want to emphasize that having task forces is of mutual benefit to the city and to the volunteer task force members. The city council, hopefully, receives information on important issues in an organized and formal way from citizens who have interests and perhaps even expertise in city-related topics. And I think a really important point is that citizens gain increased insight and knowledge into who works the city and actually how the city works. To these mutually beneficial goals, the RETF has worked, read, visited, met with, discussed, disagreed, agreed, re-discussed, reread, and this could go on in a long loop. But tonight, we do bring you information, and a lot, a lot of information, in our recommendations. The RETF met with selected city administration. This was really a very informative activity, administration and staff in their departments to learn more about their responsibilities, their challenges, and their efforts to manage efficiency, sustainability, and excellent service to our citizens. These visits and ensuing conversations, as I said, were really informative and help us understand the breadth and depth of the city work. We had, we really appreciate the willing and gracious reception that we received from Rob Hill, Chris Knight, Monte Karnes, John Max, Thomas Novotny, and Jason Tyler. Every one of them were just stellar. We also spoke with community partners about these same issues of efficiency, sustainability, and challenges, and service. And they all, these conversations reveal similar concerns about energy and greenhouse gases and the variety of solutions that could be available, and absolutely underscores the supreme need for cooperative efforts at every level, at every one of our relationships. We spoke with OSU Sustainability Officer Christina Blazer, Stillwater Public School Superintendent Mark Moore, Meridian Technology Facilities Director, and Walmart's National Sustainability Officer, Stephen Criss. And some conversations also with GRDA authorities. You know, we're always going to have climate. I mean, we, climate is. And our own state of Oklahoma is pretty well-known as the victim of a very large climate event, the Dust Bowl of the 1930s. There was an unusually long drought and periods of extended high winds, causing even black blizzards. And yet there is also a human factor that contributed to this mess. It was outdated and inappropriate farming methods. So the tragedy of the climate event was contributed to and exacerbated by human activity. The solution then was listening to the science and incorporating new technologies, new techniques for farming the land, investigating and implementing new ways of thinking about how we've always done it. This is our same 2022 challenge, listening to the science, being open to new technologies, creating new ways of doing what we have done for decades. It was a pleasure and a challenge, and definitely an education, to work with these citizens on the task force. We know even more clearly now than a year ago that our task was a big one, and the city's task is a big one, and has many more layers and implications than some of us expected. We also appreciate the challenge that creating a new cultural mindset is. The task force members came together with lots of passion, lots of expertise, lots of different skills, lots of opinions, lots of different ways of working and thinking, and luckily, one common goal: to help Stillwater be the best it can be, a healthy, safe, and economically viable community for all of its citizens. I hope you'll be well-informed by the information we've gathered and make a commitment to the Energy Action Plan and its recommendations. Thank you very much, and Robin will give you some details.
Thank you, Becky and Pat. Good evening. It's nice to be here tonight. My name is Robin Cornwell. The RETF researched impacts associated with climate change, such as the extreme weather events of May 2019, October 2020, and February 2021, and concluded that an Energy Action Plan is needed. We've defined the plan's high-level objectives as follows: maintain clean air, water, and soil; create jobs and invest in clean energy sectors; create more energy-efficient homes and businesses; create programs that are equitable, fair, and just; lead in energy independence and efficiency; develop a culture where efficiency is valued; create a master marketing plan to communicate climate change effects and solutions; and demonstrate the financial and social feasibility of a clean energy future through accurate reporting. To guide efforts toward a clean energy future, we settled on five principles: focus on efficiency first, involve diverse groups of stakeholders, prioritize equal access, incorporate community input, and make smart choices. Ensuring that elements of the plan are economically feasible, environmentally sound, and make sense for our community will necessitate choices, but ultimately result in an actionable plan. We're not suggesting spending willy-nilly. We recognize and respect the importance of being good stewards of public resources. The task force developed a preliminary baseline estimate for greenhouse gas emissions for the year 2019. Let's look at this chart. MT CO2E stands for metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. It's just a way to standardize the units across different greenhouse gases by comparing them to the warming potential of CO2. You can see the total emissions for 2019 are estimated at about 558,000 metric tons. And it's important to note, that number does not include emissions from natural gas used in people's homes or businesses for heating, hot water, cooking. That was, that's something that's going to be important That was, that's something that's going to be important to determine going forward, but it's not included in our figures. So we estimate 26% of emissions came from energy supply. That's the emissions from the process of generating electricity at our own Stillwater Energy Center. Solid waste at 11%. Those are emissions from decomposing waste, which produces greenhouse gases. And transportation is the largest piece. This estimate includes emissions from all vehicles, city fleet vehicles, as well as the rest of the community. As I know you're aware, the city only controls a portion of the sources of these emissions, so it's key to partner with everyone in the community to achieve success. The RETF created the following goals to move Stillwater toward a sustainable future. Three of the goals refer to the three sectors on the previous slide, and the fourth one calls for reducing emissions through efficiency measures. For people watching at home, it might be hard to read the slides, so I'll list the specific benchmarks for each goal. For energy supply, we recommend reducing greenhouse gases 30% by 2030 and 55% by 2050. For energy efficiency, reduce 3% by 2030 and 4% by 2050. In transportation, 5% by 2030 and 75% by 2050. And for solid waste, 16% by 2030 and 30% by 2050.
Robin Crane, interrupt you for just a second?
Yes.
On the goal one there, which is related to the energy supply, correct?
Yes.
Is that related just to our power plant in Stillwater or for all emissions from the supply of electricity we get?
I believe that's from all emissions from the supply of electricity that we get.
Okay.
Not just our Stillwater power plant.
Thank you.
We've developed more detailed suggestions in the four targeted sectors: supply, efficiency, transportation, and solid waste. You'll find further details in the appendices to the Energy Action Plan, which you have in your information packet. In the energy supply sector, for example, we suggest improving the electricity generation mix from GRDA to include more renewable energy sources such as wind and solar, and increase the level of community-based power. Now, what does that mean? It means distributed generation. Basically, that usually means onsite rooftop solar panels. And community solar, which is a large, central solar power plant that provides power to more than one customer. In the energy efficiency sector, we recommend leading by example by implementing efficiency standards in city buildings and city vehicles. We also recommend promoting conservation through water and wastewater actions, undertake actions to modernize buildings, promotes sustainable building practices, and implementing an urban forest program. In the transportation sector, transition to carbon-free vehicles in the municipal fleet. And regarding other modes of transportation, the Husband Street Bike Corridor is a great example of a way to promote bicycling and walking in the community. It's the kind of thing we're recommending. In the solid waste sector, incorporate recommendations from the Recycling Task Force, create a solid waste education and communication plan, and expand recycling. In our interim report to council last July, you asked if we could identify a few of the most impactful steps. We recommend the following near-term activities to continue progress toward the city's clean energy goals: do a greenhouse gas inventory; communicate with community partners; hire a sustainability manager; perform an energy audit of city facilities, and we congratulate the city for seeking an energy services company to do this; establish a program to switch city fleet to zero or low emissions vehicles; continue to express to GRDA our desire to move towards more renewable energy; promote the new distributed generation policy with a goal of 125 home solar customers by 2024; and continue to pursue the development of community solar. We recognize that transitioning to clean energy is a big challenge. We respectfully request the city council accept the Energy Action Plan and adopt these near-term recommendations as achievable steps toward a more sustainable future. Everybody involved has put in a lot of hard work, and I'm really proud of what we've accomplished. I hope this report leads to productive discussion and planning. I know there are some of us who would like to continue to be involved in the conversation as Stillwater works toward a clean energy future. And we're happy to take your comments and answer any questions.
Thank you, Robin and Pat, for the presentation, and thank you to all the committee members who have put so much work and time and effort and study into this report at this point. Counselors, questions, comments?
I want to say thank you too. I wanted to ask, have there been some communities that have started down this road in some of these areas or all of these areas that would provide a good way for us to look at and see what they have done well and what has been? I see some nodding. That's a good start, okay.
Yes, yes. We looked at a handful of communities that are taking steps to reduce their carbon footprint, increase their supply of clean energy. And I think they, you know, we can, we can look to them for good examples. Oklahoma City and Norman, Greensburg, Kansas, Fayetteville, Arkansas, San Antonio, Texas has some, some great things going on.
Great.
So, yes, there are, there are communities in our region that are, that are good examples.
Good examples, good. It's nice to hear some Oklahoma ones, that way it's a little bit closer.
What?
I'm sorry. So it's nice to hear someone, some that are from Oklahoma.
Yes.
A little bit closer here, so that's good.
Thanks.
I like that one of the important pieces that was mentioned was being able to track things and track progress towards the goals that we have set. And I had actually looked at the City of Fayetteville's report card, and it's quite impressive. Kind of a follow-up on Vice Mayor's and Audi's question, looking back at the report, there's a page that has a bar graph that shows the cumulative decreases for 2030 and 2050. And it becomes obvious, looking at that, a lot of the, a big piece of the plan is the transportation piece.
Yes.
And so, just sort of a follow-up, are there communities that have had progress in that particular area that we've seen that would be a best practice-type model? Because that, to me, seems like the very hardest piece to make a lot of progress, and yet that's the piece that we're saying that we want to have 75% reduction by 2050. So what have you, what have communities done or what are communities, where are there communities that have seen a lot of progress in this area?
You know, the communities I just mentioned, I'm not sure what their transportation programs are. I know that there are municipalities that are beginning to transition their own fleets to electric vehicles. It particularly makes sense for high daily mileage vehicles, such as police cars. And the technology is improving fast, I think, and making electric police cars a reality. There are, there are communities around the country that are using them and they like them. And I think what they're finding, and if any of my colleagues want to chime in, that would be fine, from the task force, but what they're finding is that the, the cost of the vehicle over the life of the vehicle is cheaper with an electric vehicle than with an internal combustion engine vehicle.
Thank you very much.
I should add that a big portion of that reduction in greenhouse gas.
Henri Wahara. A big portion of the reduction in the greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector is the fact that EVs, when you, when you transition to just one EV versus the internal combustion engine-powered vehicle, that's taking tons of, metric tons of carbon dioxide out of the equation. You save so much just by converting one vehicle over from ICE to EV. The problem is, the turnover rate of the fleet is very slow. It can take 20 years to turn over, like in Stillwater, there's probably around 2,000 vehicles that get replaced every year. And the fleet itself is like something on the order of 36,000, 40,000 vehicles. So it'll take like 20 years to convert from, from internal combustion engine-powered vehicles over to the EV. But by 2050, that's where the projection comes, where about 75% of the fleet, Stillwater fleet, will be EV.
And that's, that's community-wide, right?
That's community-wide. And one of the reasons why I'm pretty confident that we can do this is because there won't be any ICE vehicles to be bought by 2030, 2035, 2040. You won't even be able to buy internal combustion engine vehicles. So, I mean, part of the reason why that projection is so optimistic is because the manufacturers won't be delivering polluting cars by then, so. But in any case, I think what we can do is help promote the transition by marketing communications and hopefully maybe partnering with third parties to put in charging stations in very high-traffic areas or at hotels or venues that people from out of town could use to charge their vehicles. And, you know, for, for the fleet, the city fleet, there are so many potential examples where we can save a lot of money by converting over to EVs. So we'd really like for the city fleet manager and the police department to take a look at the possibility of transitioning over the next few years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a few questions.
Okay.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I too was really grateful for some of the background information. I think this is one of those topics where it's really challenging to kind of get your arms around. It's very easy to talk in a very abstract ways. It's a problem, but kind of what exactly is the problem? What are the challenges and what are the opportunities? So I appreciated the work that you all did, looking for data, finding that data, and kind of giving us a framework for how to approach some of these challenges. I personally have been spending a lot of time in the thousand-plus pages of the infrastructure and jobs bill that was just recently passed by the federal government. And almost every initiative, goal, opportunity that you all discuss in here has funding attached to it in that initiative.
That's great.
It is really great.
Yes.
It's very exciting to know, because my, 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 my next thing is always, you know, it's wonderful to spend this time planning, to define these challenges and opportunities, but the real rub of it is how do we implement? And to implement, we often need funding. And so finding funding is, is really key, I think, to a lot of these things, because it is challenging to figure out how to retool a fleet or, you know, repurchase a fleet. But I think from electric vehicles to charging stations for electric vehicles, to renewable energy, to the batteries that go into those electric vehicles, to, I mean, just you name it, across the board and across that trillion-dollar plan, there's money for a lot of these things. I'm wondering how we can connect this work with some of the opportunity that's in that infrastructure bill, very specifically identifying not just the funding from the federal government, but very specifically the programs within, within that and where those dollars are and how we, as citizens, you know, those are our tax dollars ultimately. And so how do we make sure we get our fair share of those tax dollars back to our community to support initiatives like this? I know you guys listed multiple funding opportunities. There's advanced funding for the Energy Conservation Block grants in the infrastructure bill. There's all of those programs that have kind of been foundling programs for the last, you know, 10 years or so, I think, are getting very flush with dollars. And so their ability to fund larger initiatives for communities, but also maybe fund more communities, I think is going to be really advanced in the next few years. So working quickly, I think I could see a role for this task force potentially to help us identify where we might capture those opportunities, to help kind of attain some of these goals and initiatives.
Well, I, I can't speak for everyone on the task force, but I know there are some of us who are interested in, in continuing to, to play a role.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, I think it's a, you know, it's just taking your intentions and the work that you've done and making a direct line to, I think, a funding source and maybe working.
Yes, yes, I understand, yes.
With us to identify what's feasible from the city, at the city level. But I wondered, I actually wondered if that's why the optimism was for the transportation part of it, because there is so much funding being funneled into that transition of the transportation fleets and so much work going into EV. I wondered if that was, if that infusion of federal funding was part of your optimism there.
I, I think it's, I think it's even more that the auto manufacturers are, are saying, this is what's coming.
It was a big number, though. That number, at first, I was like, hmm, that's a very optimistic number, but thank you for explaining it, yeah.
All right. I would also like to thank you for all the work that's done and the excitement that I see from all those that are involved here. I am literally 45 minutes into my career here, and I've got a lot of catching up to do. I don't know that personally, I'm prepared to vote yes to, to adopt all these goals until I understand them better, but that's okay. I do have some questions for you, though. We have a fairly new natural gas generation plant, right, that has a long life left in it, and we don't control when that thing operates, right? GRDA says we would need power, and we turn it on, we run it. So it may be running even if we have goals that says we don't want to run it so much, right?
Well, that's why we urge continuing to talk with GRDA and express a clear preference for more renewable energy in the mix that's, that we're getting from, from GRDA.
Okay. And the other question I had related to that is, the general fund has, depends upon transfers from SUA, right? And that depends on revenue at SUA. So did, did the task force look at the impact of the profitability and the revenue generated at SUA as a result of the changes you're proposing? Because that could have an impact on our general fund.
We, we did not. That was, that was not part of our task. So, no, we didn't. I, I know that, I asked the question of, when we visited the Stillwater Energy Center, I asked Lauren Smith, you know, what's, where's the incentive to be more energy efficient if indeed it's, as you say? And he said he didn't see a conflict there in encouraging citizens and city facilities to, to operate more energy efficiently, so.
Lauren's here. I think he'd like to.
Oh, hi Lauren. Yes, please, please.
Great job, you're doing a great job, by the way.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify a few things, if you don't mind.
Yes, please do, please do.
Good evening, trustee, or not trustees, counselors. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. I'd first like to clarify, Mayor, you had a question about if that 26% of greenhouse gases was from the Energy Center. That includes all of our energy produced that we receive from GRDA as well as the SPP. So it's not just the Energy Center that's... So that's a great question about the revenues. And so we spent a lot of time last year designing a DG rate that was designed to recover our costs to serve for those customers that would like solar and such. And so that's the importance of a good rate, is to help us recover those costs. And we're well aware of that. Some of the great things about efficiency in municipal buildings, we currently don't charge for electricity use for all cities' facilities. And so any reduction that we can do there, we consider that losses on our books. So anything we can do there to be more efficient and decrease that energy is, it's money in our pockets. It's actually a good deal. And so there are programs that we're looking into, for instance, LED streetlights and things like that, that essentially pay for themselves over time because we're not having to buy that energy from GRDA. Yeah. And so, was there another question? What was the... Oh, did that answer your question, Sue?
That answered my question, yes.
Lauren, do you know what the impact of, so when we're talking about electric vehicles, obviously that would be, there's a customer base there, right?
Yes.
Correct, with electric vehicles? So if there was a shift to EV, that potentially would be a revenue source for the utility?
Yes, ma'am. We're looking forward to that. That's load for us. And so what we're typically seeing now is flat load growth. However, an increase in customer count, which kind of sounds funny, doesn't it? However, we believe that's to efficiencies that are already, that are happening in building as we speak. You may recall several years back before the OSU Olympic Village was built down there, it was all a bunch of old rent houses. And a lot of those older houses weren't very efficient. You can imagine the window air conditioner, the college student, you know, cranking the AC up. And so those were replaced with the high-rise apartment buildings that are more efficient and modern. So it's kind of an interesting phenomenon that we're seeing. So to answer your question, yes, EVs were all for them.
Thank you, Lauren.
Okay. I also have a question. In the longer report in Section 3.2.1, it's talking about cost savings and the reduction of electrical use within homes and businesses. And I'm wondering what's driving that reduced electrical usage, especially if we're talking about charging vehicles and doing things we weren't doing before that might replace some electricity we're saving doing other things.
I'm not sure what is in that exact section of the report. And I am, I'm afraid I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
I think, Jen, if I, I can just speak to my limited knowledge of like energy efficiency and some of the conservation block grants, they're typically looking at, I mean, similar to what Lauren said, they're looking at more energy-efficient light bulbs, those LED systems, more energy-efficient building structures, those windows and things that might allow leakage where you're using more energy than you might require. A lot of that energy audit seemed to be focused on those kinds of areas for the most part.
Yeah. The cost savings are from energy efficiency, like building upgrades or retrofits. Actually putting in, buying an EV is going to increase your energy usage. That's definitely true. What you're doing is you're reducing greenhouse gases...
Sorry.
What's going, what's going on is the savings from switching over to EV, it'll increase the usage of electricity, which increases emissions on that side, on the energy supply side. But you're drastically reducing the emissions from switching over, away from internal combustion engines. So your transportation contribution reduces significantly while your EV, your electrical use goes up a little bit. Over, in 2050, there's going to be a significant impact on, by then, on the load that you're trying to extract from, like Stillwater Utility Authority. So Lauren's going to have to prepare for that over the next 20 years, 30 years, to prepare for being able to handle much bigger loads. But on the other hand, on the transportation side, you've almost eliminated all the emissions on that, from that sector. So that, that's a trade-off there.
Okay. I also have a question about police cruisers. If we start making a conversion to EV vehicles, you alluded a while ago that it's getting better, but what's the low-end torque like? What's the acceleration like? What's the battery life like? I mean, I bought a highly rated pushmore for my yard this last summer, and about three-fourths of the time, I get my yard mode. But every once in a while, I don't quite get it done and I've got to go do something else while the battery charges. What's the battery life like on these vehicles? We're patrolling 28 square miles approximately. Are these cars going to be able to go all day?
What Tesla, like on a Tesla that's been in service for, since way back, almost a decade, not quite a decade, they can get up, they can get 200,000, 300,000, 400,000 miles off of one battery pack. Now, that's not to say every battery pack will last that long, but they've been able to find that the life of the mechanical part of the vehicle will outlet, will break down before the battery pack. There are cases where there are defective batteries, but in essence, a battery will outlive the mechanical portion of the vehicle on an EV.
And what about miles per charge in a situation where you're traveling at cities-type speeds, not doing highway speed?
I'm not sure about what you're referring to again.
Well, if I started to shift at 6:00 in the morning and I'm driving around town for eight hours, is it going to make it for eight hours?
Oh, oh, yeah. Well, it depends on the number of miles you travel. Right now, they're able to get somewhere on the order of 250, 250 miles per charge. So I'm not sure what a police vehicle typically travels during the day.
Well, back in my day. I think that it's considerably less now, but at one point, we were upwards of 110, 120 miles per shift. I think it may be down from that now because of the individually-issued cars. But one of the things that will affect an EV is the computer, the lights, the radios, those kinds of things. I think those are the things we're going to have to experiment with to see what that range ends up being.
They have a higher electrical load than the average consumer vehicle.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Robin, just from an overall standpoint, and I appreciate the discussion and the questions and certainly all the work, what do you, how do you feel? I mean, there's a, for those of you that don't have a packet in front of you, or you can go online and find this report, but there's a 50-some-page report that comes with it. So there's a lot of discussion, a lot of detail, a lot of work that's still continuing forward from here, right?
Yes.
So, you know, how do you all on the task force sort of view your role in that continuing discussion? What is the, what's the future of the task force from this point forward?
I, as I said before, some of us are very interested in continuing to be involved in an advisory capacity. I know there are other city advisory groups, citizens advisory groups, that continue to operate continually on an as-needed basis. And certainly, I'm interested in seeing the process move forward and would definitely be interested in, want to continue to be involved. And I know there are others who also would like to.
Excellent. Yeah, that's, that's great because I think...
Is that your, is that your...
It is, yeah. I mean, I sort of see the task force sort of producing this report and kind of the overall, this is what we think needs to happen, maybe transitioning into more of an advisory committee going forward where it's not one task that you're focused on, but advising the city and the city council on how we get through some of these goals and what the next steps kind of should be. Because it will take certainly strong community effort and community support and the focus on this task force, the work that you've done so far to continue pushing these initiatives forward. So we're appreciative that you're willing to continue to do that. From a sort of decision-making standpoint, this is listed on our agenda as informational-only, so I don't know that we're adopting anything tonight. I think we should, somewhat quickly after this meeting, figure out what exactly that next step should be from a, from a city and a council perspective, right? This is good information. There's a lot, like I said, still, I think, to go through and to discuss, but I hope we can put something more definitive in terms of what the city's commitments are going to be and what our goals should be on an agenda sometime in the near future. So it's not just information but action that we're, that we're going after.
That sounds good.
Well, excellent. Thank you so much for the report. Thank you so much again for your work and for your continuing commitment to sustainability in Stillwater.
You're welcome.
Okay. That takes us to Item 6 on the Agenda Resolutions. We have Resolution CC-22-5, which is a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Stillwater Medical Center Authority in the principal amount of $40 million for the purpose of funding the remaining construction of the surgery center, OBGYN, and ICU expansion, and for the repayment of Medicare advance payments, and approving a waiver of competitive bidding on such indebtedness. Melissa, would you like to start?
I believe we have a representative from Stillwater Medical Center here to introduce the resolution.
Good. If anybody can explain it well, it will be Alan.
All right. Well, thank you for that vote of confidence, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I'm Alan Lovelace. I am the Chief Financial Officer for Stillwater Medical Center Authority. I've been with the hospital for 12 years as the, as the financial officer. And we are governed by a Board of Trustees that are appointed by you guys. And generally, the board approves all of our indebtedness. Like I said, I've been here 12 years, this is the second time, but I've come before you requesting your approval on indebtedness. And the reason is because of our trust indenture. It has two qualifications that require city council approval. The first one is a 20% test of your total assets. So if a debt issuance exceeds your total debt of 20% of your total assets, that would require your approval. That test was not met. But the other test is a 5% test, and it's 5% of your assets. So any indebtedness that exceeds 5% of your total assets, that does require approval by the city council. And so that's why I'm here today. This did go through our normal approval process that all issues like this go through. First, it went through the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is a group of community people that are appointed by the board. And it was, this $40 million indebtedness was unanimously approved by them. And then it made its way to the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees unanimously approved this $40 million as well. So the final step is to seek your approval, and that is why I am here tonight, is to ask for the city council to approve this, this step. And I'll be happy to answer any questions related to that.
Thank you, Alan. I will just say, as a member of the Board of, Hospital Board of Directors, which I sit on as the mayor, I've been, was, there was just a lot of discussion about this indebtedness, and it was approved unanimously, and there was a lot of discussion just around the fact that this is a really good financial decision from the, from the hospital in terms of interest rates and being able to borrow money at low interest rates now and rather than having to wait for the future where interest rates will most likely be much higher. And I just want to commend Alan and his team and the folks at Stillwater Medical Center for making what I think we've seen over many years to be really good, strong financial decisions to keep our community hospital, that's been under a lot of stress over the last couple of years, still in a good, strong financial position because of its good financial management. And this is an example, I think, of that. So appreciate your work, Alan.
Thank you.
All right, counselors. If there aren't any questions about the resolution, is there an action to be taken?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2022-5.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. The vote of five to zero. Resolution CC-2022-5 is adopted. Reports from officers and boards. Ms. Carnley?
Request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS, Section 307B1 of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, for the purpose of confidential communications and discussions regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or resignation of Kimberly Carnley, who is current serving as the interim city attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Carnley. Mr. McNichol?
Thank you, Mayor. City of Stillwater will be hosting a community town hall this Wednesday, February 2nd, to discuss the upcoming transportation sales tax and visitor tax propositions. The meeting will hopefully begin at 5:30 PM at the Hampton Inn in Suites at Stillwater West, weather permitting. I would encourage people to keep an eye on our Facebook account in the event that we have to cancel that due to weather. Certainly, the commercial channels are telling us that snow began and then perhaps ice is coming. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Rain barrels are now on sale for pickup through the city of Stillwater. These barrels capture water from roofs for future use, which is environmentally friendly and can save you money on your water bill. Mail-in order forms are due by April 24th, and online orders are due by May 1st. Visit stillwater.org or email stormwater@stillwater.org for more information.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counselor Hawkins?
Excuse me. If you or someone you know is needing a COVID test, Stillwater Medical Center is offering drive-through COVID testing at the Stillwater Medical Center Plaza on 12th. Test are by appointment only. Call 405-533-5087 to schedule a time.
Excellent. That's a, that's a great service that hospitals provide. Thank you. Counselor Jaloski?
Yes. Just a reminder that the burn ban in Payne County is still in effect through February 7th. Any updates regarding the ban will be posted to the Stillwater Emergency Management and City of Stillwater Facebook pages. Following city accounts on social media is a great way to stay up to date on the latest city news, especially during weeks like this week where we're expecting some potential winter weather, and that could affect events and city services.
Yes, I'm sure there are already people, my wife included, who are preparing to watch Rob Hill's live stream.
That's right. You can wake up with Rob.
Counselor Clark?
Stillwater's mayor election and propositions for the transportation sales tax and visitor tax are almost here. We encourage every registered voter to participate, know what's on the ballot, and make their voice heard. Election day is next Tuesday, February 8th, with early voting on February 3rd and 4th, which are a Thursday and a Friday. Visit stillwater.org/ttime to learn more about the upcoming propositions. And for questions about the election, contact the Payne County Election Board.
Excellent, thank you. All right. I don't have any announcements to make tonight, but I would entertain a motion regarding executive session.
Motion to enter executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session. For the purposes shown on the agenda, please vote. With a vote of... Everybody vote?
I did.
I did.
Yeah, there it is. With a vote of five to zero, we will now enter executive session. With a vote of five to zero, we've now returned from executive session. Is there any motion regarding the action during executive session?
Yes. I'd like to move to appoint Kimberly Carnley to the position of city attorney, to direct the city's contract attorney, Beth Ann Childs, to work with Kimberly Carnley, the city attorney on an employment contract to be presented to the city council in February.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Kimberly Carnley as the city attorney and to begin work on a contract. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Kimberly Carnley is now the city attorney for the city of Stillwater. Congratulations.[1798.33][1798.33][applause] Thank you all very much. Is there any further business or a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, will now be adjourned.